We'd like to follow the order, the September 28th meeting of the Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call?
Mayor Edwards here.
Council members Klein here, McCoy here, Judkins.
Here.
Weaver here.
Nick Laney.
Recanta is not here. Everyone else is counted for or present. If you all would please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forward to its fans, one nation, united, bound, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Approval.
Second, motion, second, approve the agenda. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. The agenda is approved. Next item is our citizens' presentation. This is the opportunity for citizens to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And if you do, if you come forward and identify yourself, and I think we have someone from the children's museum here.
Yes.
While you're coming up, let me just remind everyone of the principles we operate under here in Clive. We support the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting our work, we expect everyone will follow those principles. So with that, please introduce yourself.
Hi, I am Ashlyn with the Des Moines Children's Museum. I am program and events director. And I think I have a pretty awesome job, the best in the world, because I get to play. I have to do a lot of other stuff, but I also get to play. And the best thing about this is us and play is that that's how young children learn best, is through their play. So we support them and we offer new programs and events where they can just come and play and learn. We've done a lot of growing in the last year. We are offering new programs and events for the entire community. So with that in mind, I'm supposed to have a sheet to pass out to all of you, which I will just, you know, when I get it, I'll leave. I can't remember exactly how many families we had from Clive, but I know it was over a thousand in 2022. And we had over sixty-five thousand visitors as well. So with that in mind, we would ask you to keep us in mind for your budget for next year.
There she is.
Oh, hi. You have to state your name. Hi, I'm Julie Burnett. I live at 10090 Lincoln Avenue in Clive. Did we just start? No, no, like I'm wrapping up. I just asked them to keep us in mind, all of that. I wasn't sure of our numbers. You weren't sure of our numbers? Yeah, for Clive. Oh, for Clive, we had over four thousand.
There you go.
No, I'm so sorry. Two thousand five hundred and two. Well, to play with, she probably didn't mention, we actually helped supply a whole bunch of stuff in your new center on Hebraic. Yeah, we worked at the library. It was wonderful. And we've also actually ran your bingo for the Clive Festival before COVID. A few times and did the kids' center. We love working with Clive, so we're right down the street.
Very good. Any questions for Julie or Ashley? Yes, yes.
What year were you founded?
Twenty seventeen, so spring of twenty seventeen. And she's one of the founders. Yeah, I'm not usually late, you guys. I like gave myself fifteen extra minutes to get here and just traffic. Yeah, so, yeah. Oh, and I know Susan. Yeah, we're six years old. We survived COVID really well, which is great. And if you didn't, did you invite everyone? Oh, no, I sure did. Please, 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 think about coming and getting a tour. You know, it's like free always and just stop and be like, hey, I'd love to see what's going on. Or if you send us an email ahead, we'll be happy to make sure we meet you there at the front door. Give you a behind the scenes. Oh, yeah, we have an ambulance that we're building right now. It's really cool.
Do you want to tell us exactly where you're located in the mall?
Absolutely. We're at fifteen fifty-one Valley West Drive, lower level of Valley West Mall, suite one oh eight. So it's the lower level. We always recommend the southwest parking lot. So plenty of good parking on the bus line. It's wonderful.
All right. Anything else? If not, thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pete, did we have anyone online to address us?
No.
Anyone here in the chambers? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item of presentation. And Scott, I believe you're up.
Thank you very much, Mayor Edwards. I'm Scott Racker. I'm the executive director of the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center at Drake University, twenty-five oh seven University Avenue in Des Moines. It's an honor and a pleasure to be with you. Again, it's been some time since I've been before the Clive City Council and mayor. I want to thank all of you for your service. I also want to acknowledge for you that we use you as testimony of exemplar municipal governance, not only in Iowa, but across the country. And it's not just that you read the statement about the six pillars of character, but you've shown over time and time again that you conduct your business and lead in this community with that way. And I just couldn't be before you today without acknowledging that. And I want to thank you for that because we need great examples, and you are that. My purpose for being here today is to represent the Business of Character Award to Walter Roofing. And this is part of the Iowa Character Awards process. The Ray Center at Drake University is the global home for character counts. We now serve over eight million youth worldwide, but we still build breast practices here in Iowa to identify those individuals and organizations that are doing right things well, to uplift them and showcase them as great exemplars. This was part of Governor Ray's original vision for this work. We've been at this for twenty-seven years now, and every year we have a group of volunteer Iowans to take a look at nominations that come from across the state to select twelve recipients of our Iowa Character Awards. One of those awards is the Business of Character, which identifies an organization that exemplifies by their actions the six pillars of character. Acting in a capacity worthy of trust, treating people with respect, being responsible and accountable for all that they do, being fair in their decision-making process, demonstrating caring and good citizenship. With that, I'd like to ask Pete, who's been so gracious to help us, to show a brief video of the recognition of Walter Roofing.
We all need a roof over our head, right? And we got contacted by a little girl. She was probably seventy-five years.
I was just gonna pause it so you can get the audio to pick up here from the mic too. Ready?
Years old or so, and her entire house was in very, very bad shape.
It was a lady with dementia. She had water coming into her bathroom, buckled floors, and her grandson was living there with four pipples. I called Jesse, who had done one other roof, and I said, can you please try to get her roof?
She ended up having us get involved with the insurance claim. It went from being completely denied to she got her roof replaced and her siding replaced.
He added gutters on his own dime for the house and ended up getting the pipples adopted on top of the gutters in the roof.
We heard through a friend of ours that we know through church of a family that was in need of a new roof. I was helping a Ukrainian refugee family get a house in Lucas, Iowa. Walter Roofing and Solar, Jesse, the owner, kind of said, hey, I'm a member of this God squad. We'd love to help. What can we do? These folks have been traveling for eight months since they left Ukraine. They finally decided to call Iowa home. They took every penny that they had and put it into this house. Jesse said, well, we can roof the roof for you, and I think we can get the shingles. Then they reached out to their suppliers. They got the roofing materials. Their guys were super excited. And so not only did they do the roof, which was amazing because it needed to be done, they did the siding all within a day. That house was basically almost falling down to now it's completely have a ball and it's super nice. And we just did what we could to make sure that this house was safe for them. I can't even imagine what they had went through during the eight months on the travels here and prior to that in Ukraine. So it was kind of the least that we could do. After that, I talked with Jesse and kind of heard his backstory and said, hey, why did you want to help? And he gave a really great story of how he kind of helps other people because along his life, instead of other people help him. For whoever's watching this, if you are struggling with alcohol or addiction, get help. There's a million people that are going through the same thing. There is a better way of life, and it's a really, really amazing way of life.
Just seeing everything they do, they both have a heart of gold. Can't say more. They're great people. They brighten so many people's days, always giving it up to God, always giving it to someone else. And I am so happy that they're finally getting some recognition for the great people they are. Congratulations to both. They definitely deserve it.
We don't do the things that we do for the recognition, but the fact that people thought highly enough of us to take the time to nominate us, the fact that the Ray Center chose us, it's unbelievable. It feels incredible.
Yeah, it was exciting to get the call. It really was.
I think you can see from that video why they were selected. And then just want to capture for a moment as we represent this award, which was given at a banquet in July and then aired on a statewide broadcast on Fox in all markets across Iowa. You think of the number of businesses in the state of Iowa, small businesses and large businesses. There's only one that we recognize each year as a business of character for the demonstration of character. And we couldn't even begin to capture in that short video all that Walter Roofing and Solar does. But that's just one example of the outreach they do to every client they have. So on behalf of myself, the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center at Drake University, it's our honor to be for you, Mr. Mayor and city council members, to represent to Jesse and Shalise and their team and family here, the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center Walter Roofing and Solar 2023 Business of Character Award. So we'd like to have them come up and present that. Please give them a round of applause.
Mr. Pete probably wants to get a photo.
That would be great.
We will, but Jesse would like to say a few words or Shalise, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Scott. Wow, what a huge, huge honor to be here. June twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, I gave my life up to God after fighting alcoholism and addiction for a very long time. And we just kind of set out to right the wrongs that we had made. You know, obviously, people in that lifestyle don't always make the best decisions. And so the last seven plus years, we've really tried to give back. It took a lot of help for us to get to the situation that we are. And it's just, it feels like literally the least we can do to help these, these folks that need it and to give back. So I just want to say thank you to Scott for just being, you inspire me. You inspire our team. You're a great person. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to come here and represent us this award. We really appreciate it. To the Billy Ray Center for everything that they do to encourage loyalty and character in school, business, just in life in general. Certainly think the world needs more of it. To Mayor Edwards and all of you with the Clive Chamber for having us, the city council here, for having us and acknowledging this award. To our amazing team who selflessly gives back every chance that they get, day in, day out, week after week. And last but not least, my amazing wife and our fearless leader for setting a great example of how to let Christ's light shine through us every single day. So this is seriously huge honor, you guys. We can't thank you enough. Thank you so much.
Matthew and then we'll do some.
We got a couple here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and council members, we very much appreciate being allowed to take a few minutes of your time tonight to recognize this.
Thanks, guys. Continue to succeed.
Great work. All right, now Dylan, your chance to follow up with that. I guess Gunner's gonna come up and help.
If you want us to follow up, that's tough to, sorry.
Story of your life.
You just used arrows. Sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dylan Mullinix, interim director of the MPO, MPO located four twenty Watson Powell, Des Moines, Iowa. And thanks for letting us be here to talk to you tonight. It's been a while since we've been out to the city council for Clive, let alone all of our other members. Due to COVID and some transitions we've been having, but we want to get back at it. So we're happy to be here tonight to, to give you an update of what's going on with the MPO. We want to make sure that we do this periodically. So hopefully this isn't the, the last time we see you for a while. What I want to talk to you about tonight is really just give you a baseline understanding of the MPO. I know many of you, I know many of you know what the MPO is. But for those of you that don't, I want to make sure there's a good understanding of what the MPO is, how we operate, that sort of thing. And then talk about a couple of key things that are coming up in the next several months, just to put it on your radar and make sure that you're prepared and, and that we're, you know, communicating on, on some important things that are, could be affecting Clive in the future here. So about the MPO, the MPO is a federally required organization through U.S. transportation law. Started back in the nineteen sixties with the interstate system. The federal government thought it would be wise that the communities that are being affected by that big infrastructure project get together and decide collectively how it's going to impact their region. So that's really the impetus behind MPOs. And over time, that's evolved. Every transportation bill that comes out every five or six years continues to evolve what MPOs do, how they operate, well, how their funding works and so forth. And I'm here with Gunner, our public affairs manager. You know, we're staff for the MPO, but really the MPO is our member communities. It's, you know, Ted Weaver is, Councilman Weaver is our representative or your representative to, to the MPO. It does a great job. It's his counterparts and your counterparts all throughout the metro that make up the MPO. We're just the staff.
Sorry, when you said Ted was your representative.
Ted is, yes, your representative to the MPO. And, and Mayor Edwards has served on it in the past as well. So the MPO is really made up of the cities, the counties, the transit authorities and so forth within our region. And we're not unique. There's, these are required in urban areas over fifty thousand all across the country. So there's four hundred and some in the country right now. MPOs have a couple of key functions. Like I said, we're, you're really the decision-making authority on transportation issues in the region. But then there's a few things that we have to do. We have to analyze the system. We have to prepare long-range transportation plan, and I'll talk about that more in a moment. We award funding and that goes into what's called the Transportation Improvement Program. That's kind of similar to your CIP, but it's for everything that's federally funded in terms of transportation throughout the, you know, throughout the region. We have to be performance-driven. We have to have performance targets, and then we have to involve the public. And I also like to take a moment to say what we don't do. We're not DART. We're not the DOT. We don't fix potholes. We don't own or operate or manage, you know, build anything. We are really, as a former director, Tom Kane used to say, we are the tables and chairs that bring people together to allow the communities to have the conversations they need to have.
We don't give housing.
Correct. There are nine MPOs in the state. They're all structured a little bit differently. Some of them do housing. Some of them are part of other larger organizations. Ours is not. Ours is pretty much standalone, transportation only. In terms of our makeup, we have twenty member communities. So any community within that black boundary you see there, inside of that, that's over three thousand in population, is a member of the MPO, has a seat at the table, pays dues, and is eligible for the funding and the services that we receive. We're a twenty-eighty organization. We've been around, like I said, in one form or another since the nineteen sixties and as a standalone MPO since nineteen eighty-three. So this is our fortieth anniversary this year. All of the communities within that boundary are members, and then each member has representatives, and that's population-based. So every community over five or over three thousand has one representative, and then you get an additional representative for every five or fifty thousand thereafter. What that means for our metro is that every community has one. Cities of Ankeny and West Des Moines have two. City of Des Moines has five representatives. Underneath the MPO as a subcommittee is the executive committee. And the executive committee is structured by population as well. So those communities over fifty thousand plus Polk County all have a permanent seat on the executive committee. The communities under fifty thousand in population belong to one of three subareas, and those subareas collectively decide who their representatives are to the executive committee. Right now, Councilman Weaver is a member of the executive committee. We also have a technical committee, and this shows kind of the larger scope of the MPO's organizational structure. Things go through a technical committee first, then it goes on to the executive committee, and then the policy committee, policy committee being the final authority. But knowing that our staff nor, you know, the elected officials that make up the policy committee know everything about transportation, we rely on a lot of public involvement and a lot of advisory committees to help us. So we have a bicycle pedestrian roundtable who brings in expertise from that community to inform us what we should be doing and what they think we should be doing anyway. Same with the environment, same with freight, same with traffic management and so forth. So we really try to make this consensus-based. A lot of input goes into our process as required by law. So that's an overview of the MPO just in general. And I want to talk now about a couple of key things coming up here, like I mentioned. One of which is the Long Range Transportation Plan. The Long Range Transportation Plan, we call ours Mobilizing Tomorrow, is required once every five years, to be updated once every five years. Our next plan update is due in November of two thousand twenty-four, so a little over a year from now. The important thing for you to know for the Long Range Plan is, you know, while plans are important, I'm a planner by background. I think plans are great. Anything that is to be federally funded, that you want to be federally funded, has to be in that plan. So in terms of projects that you might have on the horizon, you need to make sure it's in that plan or supported by that plan. You don't have to identify every pothole, not quite a thing, but it has to be supported by it. So where we're at right now, we've been doing some work behind the scenes, but we're going to start shifting our focus to more publicly facing things here pretty soon. Public involvement, working with the communities to understand what your growth is going to look like, because your growth and those growth patterns are important for us to understand where infrastructure needs to happen. So I guess the call to action here is starting to be thinking about problem areas you might have, what projects you might want to see done over the next, that, that planning horizon's about a twenty-year planning horizon. So what do you think's going to be coming on the horizon? We'll be sitting down with your staff to understand those growth patterns and how that might affect things. But that's something you'll hopefully be hearing more about in the coming year. On a parallel track to that is another project called the Safe Streets and Roads for All. Safe Streets and Roads for All is a new program under the bipartisan infrastructure bill passed a couple of years ago now, that's providing a ton of money for safety-related improvements. And it's really a two-phased process. There was money available for planning, and then there's money available for implementation. And when it comes to implementation, for any individual community, there's up to thirty million dollars available, and this is competitive, but thirty million dollars available per award. Or up to fifty million dollars for multi-jurisdictional projects. So if the MPO were to apply, we could go up to fifty million dollars. The important thing to understand here is that you have to have a qualifying action plan before you qualify for that implementation, those implementation dollars. So what the MPO did last year, and we found out earlier this year that we were, that we received eight hundred thousand dollars to do a comprehensive safety action plan. And we're going to do that plan for the entire metro area. And what that means for you is, once that plan is done, the city of Clive will then qualify for those implementation dollars. So we're trying to help out, make sure that everyone's qualified in the metro, and then you can, you can go on and compete for those implementation dollars in a few years. The next round of those implementation dollars, or I guess the first round that that's probably likely to happen, those tend to come out in the spring. So spring of twenty-four will be the next round. We probably won't be done with the plan by then. But spring of twenty-five, we would be done with our plan. That's probably the first time you'd qualify for that. And there should be a few, a couple more rounds before that bill expires. And depending what happens in Congress, that could be extended out. We don't know yet, but for sure, there'll probably be a couple more rounds. So similar, we have a call to action for you. Start thinking about those projects. Start thinking about your needs so that we make sure they're included in that plan and that anything you go to apply for, if you choose to do that, would be qualified. We just hired, or we just kind of finalized our contracts with the Federal Hyatt Administration to get this ball rolling. So you should start seeing some action on this from us here in the next couple of months as we get going on this. And it should take, you know, about a year to complete. So I've talked about funding a little bit, so I'd be remiss if we didn't talk about the funding of the MPO awards. And this is, Mayor Edwards is very familiar with this process. The MPO receives about sixteen million dollars every year from the U.S. DOT that we award to our member communities. These funds can be used for about anything, roads, bridges, transit, trails, and so forth. And it's a competitive process. And I show up there on the screen, slide or a table there on the right that shows how those funds are typically broken down. These are guidelines that are put into our long-range plan that we, you know, locally have collectively decided on what to do. But it kind of shows you that we're going to give about twenty percent as a minimum to bridges and fifteen percent to transit or to system optimization, ten percent to transit and so forth. And I just point these out because there's a few of these programs that don't always get a lot of applications. I would say system optimization and bridges are probably two that don't always get a lot of application. So something to consider as you're thinking about, you know, what you want to do here in the future as far as applications to that program. A couple of related ones are the TAP program, the Transportation Alternatives Program. These are for things that are off-road, so trails, sidewalks, safe shops to schools and so forth. A much smaller amount of about one point five million annually, but that's, you know, a pretty interesting program and towards a lot of the trails that you see around the region. And then a new one, again, from the bipartisan infrastructure bill, is the Carbon Reduction Program. And this is something we haven't awarded yet because it's new, but we'll be awarding it for the first time this cycle. And it's about one point three million dollars every year for things that will reduce carbon emissions. So that can be EV charging stations or buses or, you know, things along those, things along those lines. I would note on that carbon reduction program too, because those funds technically started coming out in twenty twenty-three, and we award about four years in advance, we're going to have about eight million dollars that we're going to award in this cycle to kind of make up for, for that lost time. So we can do some pretty significant things with that eight million dollars in that one go. All three of those programs will follow the same cycle. We'll solicit applications starting in December. Those will be due back in early January. Our staff reviews those, scores them, and then the communities or all the project sponsors make pitches basically to our funding subcommittee, which the mayor sits on. They make a recommendation to the MPO, who then makes the final vote, probably sometime in May. Up here on the screen, you can see how the MPO has awarded funds over about the last five years. City of Clive has done very well as we try to make sure all of our communities are receiving something and have a positive return on investment. Speaking of which, if you compare what communities have received based compared to their total assessments or the dues they paid to the MPO. You know, City of Clive's feeling very positive at a forty-two to one return on investment there. So you're doing very well for yourself.
I'd say so.
That's all I have for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about anything I presented or anything else you're curious about. But again, we hope to come back to you and do this pretty regularly. I know at least once a year, if not, if not more, depending on what you want, so.
Well, thanks, Dylan. Questions, comments, Eric?
A quick question, Matt, for you. On that TAP award, it talks about recreational trails. So we applied for that as we look to redo I thirty-five eighty bridge, and we talked about having that alternate trail. Would that be something that would come under that?
Yeah, it's definitely something that we've applied for in the past and attend to in the future. I know we've talked about it for Hickman Interchange specifically with the bike pedestrian and actually kind of between us and Urbandale in terms of applying for those funds. So yes, that's definitely on the table for us. And I would also offer the Safe, the Safe Roads for All, right?
Safe Street Trail.
Safe Streets for All is one that we're very interested in too, and happy to see the MPO taking on the plan initiative because that is, we've got, the Hickman Interchange is definitely going to be eligible in the later phases for that, to, to go after that. And also I think about Alice's Road and what we'll talk about a little bit later tonight in terms of that reconstruction. We've got some pretty sizable projects that are on arterial roadways that will be ones that would be on that federal classification system that we could potentially go after. And some other infrastructure funding. So those, having those plans is a big kind of check the box for us to be able to go after these funds. So definitely things that we're talking about, and I would even offer the energy efficiency pieces too. That's also important for some of these plans when we look at our facilities, but also our roads too, in terms of preparing for a more electric car environment. Our EV environment is definitely also with the charging station, something that we've been actively thinking about with our facilities, Green Belt Landing with that major project renovations here in terms of what we can do in the parking lot and even our own city fleet. So I know Pete's been engaged with that group and those presentations that the MPO has been hosting in terms of building up our education base on those and, and finding our spot. So a lot of opportunities for us that we're looking to take advantage of.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not.
Let me just make a quick comment. So we all know that we've had some turmoil over about a year's period with the MPO and some. over about a year's period with the MPO and some of the change in leadership, what have you. But so I just want to say publicly, what a great job Dylan has done to stabilize that and really kind of put us back on path or back on track. And I think we're making some, some real good progress. So it's, it's a real testament to Dylan.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Stu and for Gunner for being here. We appreciate it.
I know you guys, you're more than welcome to stay. You're more than welcome to stay.
I was just wondering where the dog was.
Thank you guys so much.
Matt, are you allergic to dogs?
All right. Now, the next thing that we have on the agenda is a beggars night proclamation. This will differ from the ones we've done in the past in that this one will be in perpetuity unless we change it, that we are going to have beggars night on October thirtieth, which is what eighty percent of the metro does. So I'll just give the whereas and then declare it and we'll move on. Anyway, we say that whereas the city of Clive staff has surveyed communities found that October thirtieth is the preferred night. Therefore, I declare October thirtieth is beggar nights, beggars night in Clive. And that you open your doors for children from six to eight on that date on this year and every year going forward. So that I think will take care of beggars night for this year and in the future unless the metro decides to make changes. So now we'll move on to consent.
Approval.
Second, motion second for consent. Further discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote. And will the clerk please post that vote? Drum roll. And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Moving on to our action items, we're going to talk about asbestos and some of those houses we need to take down. Mark. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor, it was published in the Des Moines Register on September eleventh, two thousand and twenty three.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Sorry about my attire. I did not have the chance to go home and change, so I'm still in my uniform today.
You look good.
Well, thank you. The city had requested bids for asbestos removal from three properties as part of the flood buyout program. These properties are located at thirteen twenty, thirteen forty and thirteen seventy one Northwest Seventy Eighth Street. The estimated cost for the project was thirty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Five companies have submitted bids with REW Services Corporation having the lowest bid at ten thousand seven hundred and eighty six. Staff is comfortable recommending awarding the bid to REW Services Corporations. They have been receptive to my emails and from backgrounds research, they've been in business for over twenty one years and seem like a legitimate business. And I think they're can handle this. Any questions?
Questions for Mark, Eric?
Yeah, Mark, great job here. I always love it when we see estimates coming in under staff estimates right there. So that's always a super positive. There was a pretty large disparity between the lowest bid, as you're aware, and the largest bid from ten grand to sixty grand. Any ideas why that is?
So my assumption is on the sixty grand, which when I do the sidewalk repair program, we always get the one bid that shoots for the stars, I feel. As if maybe if no other bids come in, they'll get that bid. So that was my thought on the high bid. The other bids came in about what Doug had thought they would around maybe a little less than thirty thousand five hundred. But I couldn't get a good feeling and I didn't want to ask too many questions of why theirs was so low. And that's why we did so much research on them as a company to ensure that they were good. And like I said, I think, I think we're going to be fine. I just hope they, they did their research and know what they're getting into. So.
Yeah, yeah, we'd hate to see a change order come in that they were in way over their head and.
Yeah, no, I think they'll be all right. We've, I think they've actually done work for us in the past. So and like I said, there's not a huge discrepancy between them and the fifteen thousand dollar bid. So and we had a twenty one thousand dollar bid. I just, I don't know, I'm just kind of hoping they just came in low because they need the work and they want to get on our good side again. So.
Is this tile asbestos or is it something else?
So this is asbestos out of three of those properties. One of the properties, the entire, what do they call it? Popcorn ceiling has to be removed because it has asbestos in it. And all the drywall mud and tape has to be removed. So that was the one that most of them were bidding pretty high on that house. The other ones were just very simple things or maybe some pipe insulation off the ceiling, just about probably an hour's worth of work out of the other two homes. A little bit of window glazing, things like that, but nothing big except like I said, that one house. There is quite a bit that needs to come out. So I would assume they have a plan in place for that one.
Other questions? If not. Second, motion second closed public hearing. Before we do so, is there anyone in the chamber here who wishes to address the council on that matter? Being done with council, please vote and will clerk please post that. And the public hearing is closed by vote four to zero.
Move the resolution approving plans and specifications.
Second, motion second on plans and specs for discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote. And that passes by a vote of four to zero.
Who received a bid?
Second, motion second to receive the bids for discussion, seeing none with council, please vote. And will clerk please post that vote? That passes by vote of four to zero.
Move the resolution, we're the contractor, REW Services for ten thousand seven hundred and eighty six dollars.
Second, motion second on the contract award, further discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote. And will clerk please post that vote? That passes by vote of four to zero. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Next, we have an amendment on the capo equipment plan.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Today is the actual day that we kickstarted the FY twenty five budget process. So part of that work is to work on the capital equipment plan. And this year, the directors began planning in August and spent the last couple of months doing that. And ahead of that, of course, we need to amend the policy. So here we are. And of course, the, the current policy is from two thousand and twelve. So you can imagine that staff is proposing some changes. So staff analyzed maintenance trends and records, evaluated replacement cycles, inflationary costs and the supply and demand issues that we were dealing with in the last few years. We included in the packet recommended amendments to the policy. There's both a red line version and a clean version. And then we also this, this time included the updated financial tracking spreadsheets for you to review. You'll see items in the, that the department no longer desired in the red line version. And we're perhaps moved to the operating budget. You also see that items were added because maybe they hit a higher cost due to that inflation. And then they reached the expenditure threshold. Tonight, staff is recommending approval of the resolution amending the CEP policy. In the future, you'll see in the budget process that you'll be looking at the budget for the equipment for the year. And then of course, you'll be, the purchases will all be on the consent agenda. So there's other items or action items in the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on the CP.
Questions for Liz, Ted?
So Liz, there were a number of new items that were added. And I was just curious, how did we come up with the estimated timeframe if they're new? Was it just based off manufacturer's recommendation or how did we come up with those numbers?
That is part of it, but then they also looked at maintenance trends and analysis over the years to see if they could be extended out.
If they're new, so we don't, are, are they all things that we still have? We just didn't have it on the list?
They are things that we still have.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, since two thousand and twelve, there's been many items that we've added. Yeah.
And then I didn't see Clay here. So one thing that okay, so just one thing that caught my eye, just because it's so expensive is the ladder truck from twenty to seventeen years. What, just what was the rationale there?
So originally we used to have the engines at fifteen and the ladders at twenty. And we're finding is that the recommendations are really more on average between those two numbers. And so that was the change to seventeen years. Cause I know he and I have talked about that. With the ladder truck too, as you probably saw in there, the expense of that piece of equipment has gone up exponentially. And I can also say the lead time to get a ladder is almost three years.
Wow.
From order to actual, to receipt, I think Windsor Heights just got an engine that they ordered around the pandemic and they just got it a few months ago. So there is, one thing I can say to that is there is some discussions that Clay is having with neighboring communities, particularly Urbandale about rethinking our strategy related to some of those apparatus, particularly the ladder truck. As we have many multiple communities, including ourselves that have a ladder truck and what is the right combination for that? And is there a situation where maybe some departments work together that have a frontline ladder, but maybe one that's in reserve that we keep for a longer time period? So we're not having to replace that ladder truck as frequently. So those are some conversations that he's having right now in terms of what's the best makeup for those. And I give him credit for diving in on that. So there hopefully will be more to come before we make a have a recommendation for a final decision on that piece of equipment. One thing I will also note with that item, because it's over, it's such a significant threshold, we typically plan for that in our capital improvements budget. Because we, we issue debt for it because it's so large and because it has that seventeen year.
Where are we at in the cycle with our current one?
So our current one, it's, it would be so in the packet and I'll find the page where it has that spreadsheet. It's due for replacement.
Twenty eight.
So we are nearing a point where he, if we need to replace that ladder, already starting to identify the specs that we would need to have for that piece of equipment. And so we will have to make a decision probably in the next year on that in terms of making the order with the expense not coming until when the vehicle would actually be completed. So we've got, that's part of the reason he's having these conversations now in terms of understanding what that looks like for us going forward, both for the ladder and I would say the engines. And even ambulances too, because we have two ambulances, one in reserve, one always frontline. Thinking again about all the communities, is there an opportunity where we could all share a reserve ambulance? And I'll have a frontline one. So because of this, the, because if you look at the ambulance cost too, those have significantly gone up as well. And so that is where we are working on and trying to make modifications to keep pace with these expenses. But as you can see, particularly with those two pieces of equipment and dump trucks and patrol vehicles and a lot of things that we purchased, they've gone up significantly over the last three years.
Thank you.
Matt, I really liked the, the thinking of utilizing a ladder truck as a regional asset. We've done that with the foam, other departments use that with command centers and boats and things of that nature. When we're looking, you know, the, the ladder truck is, you know, that's a million dollar bill right there. One has to ask yourself, we get that usage out of a McClive basis. We don't have maybe perhaps some of the structures that we could use enough. I really like to have a regional asset right there, which is a shared cost amongst many communities right there. You know, I just think that's the way to at least explore that.
Right.
Continue exploring that.
Yep.
On, on that type of equipment, are you basing that up purely years or hours?
It's years. Partially because of the weight on the frame. But, but we can get you more details on, on that because I know that's something he's digging into right now pretty, pretty intently.
Again, if there are any other questions, we're looking for a resolution here.
Move the resolution second.
Motion second on the resolution, further discussion. Being done with council, please vote. And will clerk please post that. And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Now we move on to discussion and we're going to start with Alice's Road. Jeff.
Mayor Council, good evening. We're getting ready to undertake one of the largest projects Clive's probably ever undertaken. Several tens of millions of dollars for a complete reconstruction of the Alice's Road corridor. As we get ready to do that and start to work with a consultant to come up with not only a scope, but a professional services agreement, we want to create a vision for that corridor and talk about what it is we want to see there. It's not only a street, but it's a corridor. And I'm trying to include everything we'd like to see up through there. It's not something we want to take lightly. We want to make sure that you're on board with what we see as that vision for that corridor and give you a chance for some input as we get ready to proceed with this process. As you look at it, we see it as a street. We've already kind of committed with Waki's nine lanes on the south end and Urbandale's four lanes on the north end connecting through there with the four lane. As we go through there, we want to include a bike pedestrian trail. We want to include the improvements and finish out Douglas Parkway, including looking at the intersection of Berkshire and Douglas to see what the final component design control for that intersection looks like. Make the connection and finish our portion of Douglas to the west of Alice's Road. And also look at how we're going to cross a little walnut creek through there. We have a wild scene that we've come up with. We'd like to include a little bit of aesthetic along through there and basically make sure we meet all our stormwater requirements. We'll go through it. There'll be some easements right away that we need to acquire that we all part of this project and kind of laid it out in the RFQ with the intent that we will take a look at consultants qualifications, select consultant that we'd like to use for the corridor. Sit down and get more specific with the scope and identify all those elements to make sure we're both on the same page. With the size of this project, I think it's important that we are all on that same page and understand it's very clearly what is expected and what those desires and needs are. So with that, hopefully you had a chance to read the vision statement through there and be glad to answer any questions or talk about any changes you might like to see to it.
Questions for Jeff?
What's the timing on the RFQ, Jeff, as far as?
It'll be going out as soon as we get agreement on the RFQ vision statement. I already talked to Waki, they're okay with it as it reads. So unless we have any changes, probably going out first next week.
And when, when would we get responses back and decisions made normally?
We'd probably give them about a month to get back. If we can, we'd like to bring it to council in November, depending on how those negotiations take. But more likely, probably the first meeting and the only meeting in December to get them started.
And this is just the planning phase, right? Because construction doesn't start till twenty five, is that?
Yes, this would include, it's, it's broken down. Phase one is basically from the south corporate limit up to the south side of Douglas. But as part of that, as we put in there in the RFQ, we also want to include basically a concept to the whole corridor. Let's just not design this and then figure out what the rest is going to look like. Let's at least get a concept for all of it. And include that as part of this concept as well as with looking at how we're going to get across a little walnut creek. If it happens to be bridges that we need, there's a lot of money out there, but let's give us plenty of time to, you know, apply for those grants and get some funding to help us with the bridges if it has to go that way. So we're playing on including all that in the first phase. But there will only be the design and construction from Waki up to the south side of Douglas.
Jeff, I see phase one construction fall of twenty five. What do you see as a timeline for potentially for the rest of the project?
Again, I guess till we get a little more in design and see what we're looking at, you know, I'd like to think it's one year right after the other and we do it in four years. I'm guessing with what we're seeing on a construction and some of the easements and right away negotiations that it may take a little bit longer. We'll probably get the start of the design, but of course you can't start the construction until the previous phase is completed. So I, I'm hopefully a year per phase, but you know, there may be one that goes out and drags us out a little bit and pushes one phase back to the second year.
And so will that mean that like both directions in that area will be shut down to one lane for four years? Or how, how do you envision that working?
I'm guessing that if we can look at it as minimal as we can, we'd like to shut both directions off. At one time, it'll have to be phased. Of course, there's access somewhere in the middle for residents on both sides.
We've got a lot more residents that live out there now.
Yes, the section from Douglas South. Yeah, yes. The section from uh Douglas South, we basically got, you know, one lane there on the east side that we'd have to maintain access to. And I think everything off the other side can get in from the back roads, so that one won't be as difficult, but now as you get to the north a little bit. Um, the depending on how we finish up acquisition of the properties there on the west side of Alice's Road between Douglas and Berkshire. Um, you know, that possibly potentially construction could be, and we'd like to think we could do it that way, but again, till we get a little more into the design is. Construct two brand new lanes, move traffic over to that and then construct the next two, but till we get into that and look at how it lays out, um, we're not exactly sure. One of the things we're talking about too in here, and you might have noticed is, let's just not assume it's going to be a traffic signal at the intersection. Let's at least take a look at what roundabouts would look like and how that would affect our traffic control through there. Uh, those are a little more difficult to construct under traffic. So, you know, all that would be factored in as we look at. How this will be put together and and how that traffic staging will take place as we move down the road.
Anything else for Jeff?
Very good. Thank you.
We'll take this as your direction and move forward.
Thank you.
Richard, you have two items here.
All right, let me get a presentation up here real quick for the first one.
They're already opened up, Richard Dick just went pull up from down below.
All right. All right, the first item tonight is a check in with the council on Indian Hills Woods Trail Alignment. So just a a quick overview on where we're at and all the other rest of the projects that have been going on out there. Uh, Public Works has mobilized uh their equipment uh north of Lincoln to begin starting on that work here in the early part of October. Uh, they expect that will probably go five to six weeks. Obviously, that's very dependent on whether if we get a lot of rain or if it stays dry like this. Landscape restoration, we have all the trees and trubs in. Uh, watering has been ongoing quite frequently this summer and um we're kind of monitoring the health of those. We had a a very good survival rate uh through the fall. Probably less than a half a dozen that will have to replace either this fall or next spring, so very excited about that. Um, and then finally, the trail, um, McLure Engineering, which the council authorized the the contract with them a couple meetings ago, is well underway with the design of that. And so we're excited that uh depending the direction that we get tonight from the council will be ready to go with bidding here towards the end of the month and into November. So I just want to take a step back and talk about where we've been and where we're going from here. So. In terms of the trail design and alignment, here are some of the things that we've talked about with the council and the direction that we received from you on those items. So the first uh few items are related to trail design. So one of the things that was talked about was what should that surface material be? Originally, it was proposed to be. An asphalt or concrete surface, but based on feedback that we received from uh multiple residents out in this area here. They really preferred to find a way to keep a more natural feel like that trail had been for a long time. And so the decision was to go away from the concrete or asphalt and go to a crushed limestone surface. That would still give uh durability, the hard surface, but still give more of that natural feel. We also talked about the extent of the trail, how far was the construction gonna be for this trail? Um, we talked about going either from Lincoln to Ninety-Eighth Street or from Lincoln to a Hundred Street. And the direction was to prepare the trail for Lincoln to a Hundred Street, obviously then longer term, looking to connect this to the green belt. Through a new construction of a new bridge at some point in the future. That hasn't been determined at this point, but something we're keeping our eye on in the future. And then finally, we talked about the trail alignment um west of Ninety-Eighth, or I'm sorry, between Ninety-Eighth and Lincoln. So essentially that will stay on the same alignment that um that old Mulch Trail was on. We had had some discussion about additional bridges to uh make it a little bit more um stay away from more of the residents. But um direction we gotten from the council was to uh stay away from the bridges, do the costs and find ways to get that in there without doing that. So that kind of left one outstanding decision here. Um, once uh the city hired McLure and we were ready to go with that. Again, out there working on the alignment and some of the sewer um sorry survey associated with getting those plans prepared. Um, one of the residents at the corner of Ninety-Eighth and Carpenter was concerned about how close that might be to their backyard. And so they had reached out to the council, so um we met with council member Weaver as well as the resident to kind of talk about. Uh, their concerns related to that, and one of the things they had asked, is there a way to look at another way? To cross that creek that could potentially get that trail a little bit farther away from their backyard. So this is kind of where we we jump into that a little bit deeper here. So uh previous direction from the council, like we talked about. Was not to construct an additional bridge here, which is part of the original proposal. So. The original proposal, we would have come a little bit farther south along the east side of Ninety-Eighth Street, crossed. Then crossed over, which would have needed to put a bridge uh just a little bit west of Ninety-Eighth Street. Through the co- the the cost of that, council said um that we didn't want to spend the money on the hundred plus thousand dollars if we needed to do that. So that left us with the yellow route that we have here. But due to the concerns of that resident, um, one of the things we want to do is see is there other ways maybe to cross that creek without a bridge. Um, that could be cost effective and designed effectively. So since that time, we've done a little bit additional work. And one of the things that we brainstormed was the possibility of what we call a low flow trail crossing concept. I think Jeff uh and Jeff May called it a Missouri crossing. Um, so I think it's got a bunch of different names that you could use to call something like this. But one of one of the things we wanted to see is this something that would work. So it's a trail that would be constructed. Probably twelve to eighteen inches above the normal water level of that small creek out there. Uh, in any, pretty much any rain, it would be inundated with water and closed, so not available to the public. But we all know that that creek out there is something that's very flashy. It's gonna go up and down very quick, usually within a couple hours. So after getting into that a little bit, um, we've determined, at least our recommendation is that that alignment and doing that. Uh, low flow crossing is something that would not work. Um, the reason for that is a couple of different things here. So uh the red alignment would have been the proposed alignment that we were looking at to do that low flow crossing. And uh what we've determined is we cannot be constructed and meet um modern ADA standards in terms of slope. For the accessibility portion of that, there is a distance from the sidewalk on Ninety-Eighth Street down to the creek of about seventy feet. And across that duration, other that that distance, there's about nine feet of elevation change. That would roughly represent uh about a twelve point eight uh percent slope, which exceeds all the. The standard design specifications for a a nice trail ADA slope. Uh, just to give you a feel there, twelve point five percent is the highest recommended slope that uh modern design standards allow for ADA accessibility. And you can only do that over a a length of ten feet without having a flat spot for rest. So within seventy feet there, we would not be able to get even down to a twelve point five percent slope. For ten feet, have a flat spot, do it again, do it again, and do it again. So um due to that, we're recommending that the original route along the north side of the creek be the one that we move forward with. So I'll just finish up here and then we'll go back to discussion about that or any questions that you might have. Um, so uh depending on the direction tonight, we'll finalize the designs uh by the end of the month. The hope is to bid uh an award for construction in November, construction um start in December and wrap up by May. Obviously, the winter weather will determine, you know, how quickly they can go, and the hope is then to dedicate this space in the summer of twenty twenty four. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions, and I don't know if there's anyone that wants to speak on this.
Yeah, so I'll I'll speak a little bit here. Um, so this is something I've been involved in at a pretty detailed level. Had a lot of questions for Richard this week. Um, and he's done a great job in getting me all the information that I needed. I was looking for a way, if there was a way that we could thread the needle, right? Figure out an alternative solution. It it's not just Mark, that the the gentleman that lives there on the corner, that some of the other neighbors are are not thrilled with the. The solution either. And so, you know, we were looking at at, is there a way that we could potentially? Uh, figure out an an alternative solution that works for both parties. At the end of the day, there wasn't. Um, and so, um, you know, I think Mark has has come to that realization and as like. Is is accepting of it. There are some things that we need to do on our end from a buffer standpoint. And things of that nature that that Richard uh, you know, has committed to working with him directly on. Can you, is there a way to provide uh not just Mark, but maybe some of these other residents as well? Some renderings of what it's going to look like and with 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 the buffering and that we're proposing, obviously that can change. Based off how they might want to customize it, but just how you would propose doing that.
Yeah, absolutely. We can reach out to uh each one of them individually and just kind of work through some of those design aspects. You know, one of the things. Especially related to buffer and some of those type of things when it comes to the property, individual property owners, we want to be. Sensitive to what maybe density and how much landscaping they might want as a buffer, just like we've done on the rest of the Indian Hills Woods project. So. We can definitely do that. Um, and if there's any other ways that we can work to be.
Help them visualize that. So um if we could produce something like that and then reach out to them, that'd be, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, you know, it's always changing, always difficult for residents when a new trail and, you know, they're not sure. But I I think you guys have come up with a pretty good solid compromise right here, especially with the buffering. Uh, as well to kind of shield that a little bit. I do want to remind you that that this portion of the trail is, I lived in this neighborhood for years, it's very little used. It's not a a, like the rest of the green belt where there's a lot of people that use it. You've got a hundred, you've got a hundred street on one end. That it that people aren't really walking on, and then you've got uh the street right there. So it's not a heavily used trail right there. And I think kind of when we're all over and done with, it's much ado.
I agree. I concede that. I I guess the the hope, I think, in doing some of this is that it does get more used, right? So but but you're right, right now it's just kind of a a cow path, I think is how how Matt. So yeah, a lot of people don't know that it's there, right? So I think by the work that we're gonna do, more people will, and it might get a a little bit more usage as a result of that, so.
And I would offer too that just having the bigger perspective on this, I think doing this analysis and evaluation was important because, yeah, we. To council member Klein's point, we do hope that there is more usage and our hope is long term and the Green Belt Master Plan lays this out. Is as this trail now progresses all the way down to Lincoln in a more formalized manner. That eventually we want to work to make that connection over to the green belt um at some point with a new crossing at some point in the future. I think kind of what happens with the creek in that area and a potential remander needs to be sorted out before we even get there. But then it makes that direct connection and and could be a little bit busier trail connection. Which is the idea behind all of our neighborhood trail connections, but so there is that potential. And so I think making sure that we're. In a good stabilized manner through this entire stretch that uh will be good for the long term.
Matt, the city owns that land directly, goes directly north, doesn't it? There's an easement there. How how does that work?
City owns it in between the houses. That's actually where Public Works is finishing up their work here.
That's right.
Actually just started, right, Jeff? Uh, or started mobilizing here in this. Yeah, so we've got a little bit to finish there north of Lincoln. That is city owned property in between the.
You can kind of see it at the very top right of the screen here. Um, it it goes basically. That with all the way back to the back of the houses, and that's when the rest of the green belt opens up.
And that's another just conversation, because when we're thinking there's the crossing that's a little further east in the neighborhood, does that shift over here? When we need to replace that bridge, do we actually move it over here when we replace it? That's um just kind of long term um for what could happen in this corridor, especially. Um, really good neighborhood connection in the future too, with the investments the city has made to reestablish this this beautiful corridor now.
Weaver, is that your word for the night cow path?
I got that from.
That was my phrase, yeah.
So do you have direction?
Yep, we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. One other thing I could offer, uh, the engagement with Mark and those neighbors who had concerns and also with the. Councilman Weaver, that happened, it's been going on for multiple weeks, but it certainly happened as soon as the pack went out this week. Also with the two neighbors who live where the construction work that's gonna be starting in uh next week, we've already been directly in touch with all of them. And before, uh, earlier today, I sent out a broader update to the entire neighborhood about not only this unique question about west of Ninety-Eighth Street. But then the timeline for construction this fall and what they should expect to see over the next twelve months.
Have you received much feedback from those folks that that are east of many of where we're at and kind of how that's going?
East of Ninety-Eighth, um, most of that from my side has been about vegetation that got planted this year. So they were concerned about making sure things stayed alive and Parks Team did a lot of watering this summer to make sure we had that good success rate.
So not not a, not negative or anything that's troublesome, I, because I haven't heard anything.
Not since the discussion about the paving, uh, the 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 trail material. Um, I think there'll be some questions about the bridge when it comes to that.
But yeah, I think, you know, a lot of it is the work Jeff Teal and and the Park staff have done to work with all the residents out there on the type of buffers they want. And communicated them when the plantings were going in. So we've, a lot of it's been on the ground, kind of out there, working with them all summer long.
Yeah, I know Ray's been doing a lot of work too on some drainage things that have popped up since the work has been done to get things really tuned up for those stair stepping pools.
All right, so I just wanted to do a quick check in with the council here and kind of our proposed kind of plan of attack for how we um get that playground replaced out there. As we all know, the playground was destroyed by arson on August seventeenth uh this year, occurred in the middle of the night, um, no suspects at this point. And I think you saw earlier this week or last week, I don't remember the date that went out. Uh, the uh press release on the reward that we talked about at one of your previous council meetings. So hopefully that helps generate some. Some leads for the police department uh to figure out who uh did this. But in the meantime, in the background, one of the things we've been doing is working with uh the city's insurance. Uh, to figure out what we needed to do to get that replaced. So since that time, we've worked with them to get understanding on that. Um, so here's kind of our proposal for how we approach this. We're proposing to replace the entire playground um with poured in place rubber surfacing out there. So basically, the only element left that wasn't destroyed by fire is that uh kind of space net. I think some people call it like a spider web because it kind of looks like it. Um, we're proposing to uh remove that as well and replace it with a brand new playground at a budget of three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that would put the playground equipment roughly in the neighborhood of like a hundred eighty to a hundred ninety thousand. And the port and place rubber surface is about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand. It's a pretty big size uh playground out there, so that's why the rubber surface is a little bit high out there, just the way that was designed originally. Um, we have uh or anticipate receiving just under a hundred thousand dollars um as an insurance settlement from that. So putting that towards the replacement of that and then uh two hundred thousand dollars from the capital equipment program funds. We've been programming funds in there each year to replace uh different elements of the park system, including playgrounds. Surprisingly, uh, Stonegate Park is nearing fifteen plus years old now. And actually was the second playground we proposed for replacement in the CEP. The first one is Huntington Ridge uh starting next year. We're proposing to push that back and push Stonegate up for that extra funding. And then just pushing Huntington Ridge back by one year. Um, since not not really having a playground puts a little bit higher priority than replacing an existing playground. That's our proposal at this point. Uh, we've also been approached by the Horizon Event Center and the Clive Community Foundation and potentially doing. Uh, benefit concert this fall with funds from that, being able to rep- help replace the playground there. Um, and then any uh any funds that that would help would just help push um into the following year with the Huntington Ridge Playground Replacement. So um depending on the kind of dialogue we have here tonight, the goal will be to develop three to five potential playground concepts. The image before and the image after are a couple of concepts we got just to kind of start to budget out and figure out how much. It would take to replace the entire entire playground. Once we have those concepts developed, we will take them out to neighborhood, the neighborhood for review and selection. Uh, one of the things we're talking about doing is uh putting signs out there with a QR code to an online questionnaire. Uh, so that people could go and work with their kids and kind of select what they think would be the the best concept. We'll also send out postcards to everyone surrounding the park. We haven't determined the entire, how far away from the park, but probably five hundred feet. We'd send postcards out to a very similar process to what we did with um selecting the playground and shelter at Cirque du Cina Park. We'll then bring that back for review by the Parks Recreation and Public Art Board, and then ultimately you for review and approval. Um, work on details if a benefit concert makes sense, and then find the construction with the hope of that being wrapped up by early summer of next year. With that, be happy to take any questions or comments you may have.
Would you worry is Huntington Ridge Park? Refresh my memory on.
Um, so just west of a hundred and twenty eighth street, kind of buried in the neighborhood back there.
That's the one back back up in there off of off of uh at the end, end of the street.
Yes, yep. And then it has little uh trails that spider out to the following neighborhoods.
Is there anything in there right now?
Um, there's a playground and a few other things. It's just time to replace the playground out there. It's still serviceable at this point.
I like the flexibility of, obviously, we've got, you know, a a real need here with Stonegate and just flip flopping those right there. So I like that flexibility. Uh, you said you're gonna take the spider web down. Why, why is that? It's a very popular item.
Um, so uh basically, it's getting close to that time where we would have replaced it anyway from how long the manufacturer warranties that playground equipment. So rather than just waiting the two or three years and then having to replace that, we thought maybe it was time just to replace everything since two thirds of it's been burned down. That allows us to put in the port and place rubber surface all at one time. And so then we don't have to think about this park's replacement again for another fifteen plus years.
What would we do with that equipment that we?
So one of the things we will do on that is see, can any of it be salvaged? Could it be placed somewhere else? Could you buy a new rope and salvage the post? So we'll, we'll investigate some of that to see if it's possible to be reused somewhere else.
And you know, we've done really a great job here in Clive of getting feedback from the neighborhood. You know, what do you want in your park? I really commend how we, we, you know, we've been doing that since I was on Parks or Action. The neighbor, the neighborhood really loves it. It's their park. I do want to offer an option to when we start putting the stuff and give them the option to help. We did this with, uh, it was a car park would have it. And a lot of the neighbors should help put equipment together. And I know there's liability issues there, but they really felt like they were being involved in the whole thing and enjoyed it.
Yeah, we could absolutely look at something like that when we're next spring and summer and see if we can get some volunteers to help us out with that. Yeah, we'd be happy to do that. It's a, you're right. It's an absolutely, it's a great way to build community and get them engaged in the project.
And just for the council's knowledge that the spreadsheet that we talked about earlier with the CEP for leisure services, the 200,000 was in FY 2028 for Stonegate Park. And so it would just shift up and then all the numbers in FY 2025 would just shift back a year. So it really, you know, the unfortunate situation, but this timing is, is, can work out for us to make sure we're doing a full reinvestment. And then, you know, pending your direction tonight, we'd want to get a communication out to the neighborhood here fairly soon that we're not just, you know, what's the status, right? I think there's some questions out there. What's happening with the playground? And, and so while Richard and his team are working on the concepts for the consideration, we'll at least get a communication out there to say, we're not just going to replace it. We're going to upgrade the whole neighbor playground. And then continue working on the potentials for a benefit concert that would just bring that $200,000 number down for us and get it all done right next spring.
And you have the opportunity to do a really nice every cutting too. And go, go through the history of why we're doing this to the neighbors. And that might cause people maybe perhaps be a little more vigilant. Keeping eyes on them.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Richard.
All right. Thank you. We'll move forward.
Moving to reports. Pete.
Thank you, Your Honor. So we have started advertising the communications specialist position. Already had a number of meetings with interested candidates. Excited about that. I'm kind of feeling good that we're going to get a very good and diverse applicant pool, people with a lot of different skills and experience levels. We're finishing up our last soil quality restoration installations and then on to punch list work in the month of October. As we had last year, there were in the course of putting the compost down, some fences that got nicked here and there and a couple of other things. So I want to commend Julia McGuire, my colleague, who has been really doing most of the lifting on the work, on the program this year with contractor. She's been doing a great job making sure we hold them accountable and they're playing that good middle role between the resident and the contractor to make sure that they get what they were guaranteed to get, good installation and property restored to what it was before. That is, that's it.
That's it. Ted. All right. Well, we got the update on MPOs. I think we're good there. I did attend my first Clive Community Foundation meeting this afternoon. So I'm just kind of introducing myself to that board and kind of, you know, absorbing a lot of the information. So I'll be, I think Susan was on prior to me. Is that right? And so I'll be stepping in now. So I'll be stepping in going forward for that. So that's it.
Eric. I've got a video I'd like to play for catch tomorrow. Our new marketing effort. Okay, building on, you know, the, the silent, the city is not theme right there. Also for the month of August, the following events have been, I'm not going to go through all of, a lot of them. We've had strong summer months, the AAU Junior Olympic Games, County Agricultural Agents, Iowa State Fair, Savannah Bananas was, was a big deal. So all kinds of good stuff going on. So continue moving forward with the active schedule of folks coming in.
Eric, I saw a reference to Center Grove. What's that?
Center Grove.
I know Big Grove.
I know. It's Center Grove Orchard. It's amazing. It's up in Cambridge, just north of Ankeny. And it's like, I don't know if you've ever heard of Valles Pumpkin Patch in Nebraska, but it's like equivalent to that. It's got like a train in the middle of their apple orchard and.
That is pretty nice.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Value, value added right there.
I had a chance to attend the Commercial Real Estate Expo this week, and that was pretty interesting. A lot of positive economic news really for Iowa and beyond. So that was encouraging. The Bravo is accepting applications for grants until tomorrow. Firm deadline at three and I'm going to be on one of the committees to review grants. So those are the two main things.
Hopefully we'll have some Clive-based, you know, organizations apply for this. It's been kind of feast or famine as we've looked at those numbers. I think last year there's a lot of money donated to Clive and then before that there was maybe a dribble.
Yeah, I, I know there's always an interest in doing so, but the applications have.
Historical society, Lions Club were the typical Clive food services.
And we just got 125,000 from the Bravo Icon Combination Grant for our Green Belt Landing. So we definitely got a good, got a good chunk there here in the last couple of months.
We are starting to plan the next gala. Oh, sure. And I attended the ribbon cutting for Count the Kicks, also known as Healthy Birthday in Clive. I didn't realize they'd been in the building since April, but they are national in scope. They are serving, you know, many people around the country. And they talked about well over 100 lives that have been saved so far. So it's heartwarming.
Yeah, they reduced sudden infant deaths by a third.
Wow.
Pretty impactful. So headquartered right here in Clive. Anything else, Susan? If not, Michael? I do not have anything. Well.
Michael, I had a quick Dart question.
Dart?
Yeah. With, with the advent of the electric buses from Proterra filing for bankruptcy and the electric bus is not working. Has Dart looked at a strategy moving forward utilizing EV vehicles? And what are they going to do with their current stock? And what's their evaluation on that?
Saying the little that I know from being gone, you know, not the main board member on that for a while. But when I left, they had put those kind of in a holding pattern, going after Proterra for some of the repairs on that. My knowledge, they are still not running.
That's correct.
And there is little hope that those buses will run. So when we hear extra funding for electric buses and such, makes me very nervous. You know, cars and fleet cars and things like that, I'm a believer in, but heavy equipment in buses and bulldozers and things like that. I'm not quite there yet, especially after we got bit with seven electric buses that are in a holding pattern.
$860,000 per bus.
We need to ship them south. They seem to work in the south a little bit better. Yeah, these were a little more than just the battery of having trouble with drainage. It was instant combustion where it wasn't supposed to be. So with some fires and some other things in areas that it wasn't supposed to be fired. So there's many facets of those buses that, you know, operating properly. So perhaps just the manufacturer, but leaves a bad taste. I'll ask to get more on that though.
Neil, no report, Your Honor. Yeah, but a few items tonight, I'm going to come back to Dart here in a minute because I attended the budget workshop on Tuesday with Councilmember Mickel and Andy, who's the, our Dart Commissioner. So I'll give an update on that in a moment. I wanted to start with having Jeff give an update on our Lake Point Drive project and finalizing that out. I know that the council and staff have received feedback, letters here recently. Wanted to give an update and just kind of talk to the council about where we're at with that project and that it's where it was an original schedule, current schedule. And then talk a little bit about staff's work with HOAs and homeowners just at a high level. I know you're well aware of most of the information, but wanted to take a minute when we had you all together just to touch base on Lake Point. So Jeff, you want to give an update on that?
Oh, sure. Try. This project was originally scheduled for substantial completion by Labor Day with, or with project finalized by the end of this month. We didn't quite meet that. The contractor did run into some delays throughout the project. One of the first ones, big ones was meeting our subgrade requirement with a CBR 10. They use cement stabilization and they didn't get it compacted well enough. Ran into the problem that you can't just tear it back up and, and compact it again because the cement is already set up. So they had to take about 10 days in there to figure out and come up with an alternative plan to meet it. And it, and it did delay them. And so there was no activity out there. But we did have the intersection of a Northwest Hunter or 38th open. So the detour in pink is what they were using, the reddish pink color. By Labor Day or basically September 1st, they could go out on 138th on the orange there. And then just recently here, we got opened up that yellow section down to Lake Point. So they don't have to go quite all the way back through their subdivision there. So timing of the project, we are a little bit behind, but for what we've seen on a lot of other projects and things that, you know, four to six weeks for a complete reconstruction is not into the world. Unfortunately, it's not the greatest. So we are pushing what remains right now is they're working on a bit bio swells on the last little two blocks there. We could open up the one lane and do traffic control, but it would also slow them down. So we're pushing them to get those finished up and leave that closed with just the short detour to go over on 138th to University. So we are working with that. As far as the project itself, it was a typical construction project. You know, they are messy, they are dirty, they are noisy. We, we did our best, the contract to work within our requirements as far as the noise ordinance, did everything they could. It was a dry year, so there's probably a little more dust than usual. We didn't get as many rain events to help calm that down. So there were some issues with that. We did meet with everyone out there. Jonathan Sagan did a great job of getting out and talking to everyone and letting them know about their irrigation systems, being in the right of way, what their responsibilities were. I'm not sure that it, it was fully understood when they put them in there, that they were probably not the ones that signed the paperwork. But basically our ordinance says that, you know, we will allow you to put them there, but if they become in the way or need to be moved as part of a construction project or our needs, they are responsible for it. I, I think there were some feelings that if we just mark it for you, you work around it. Unfortunately, they were in the way of our construction. And so we have created some issues out there for them, you know, for the way they were installed as far as their ability to use their sprinkler systems. It's something we probably learned that we'll probably do a little more work up front, on the front end to make them very aware that, you know, if you don't take action and do something with your sprinkler systems, when we start a project, you may be without them for the summer. We may just have to say those words to get their understanding of what those impacts could be. We're going to be doing a lot of work out in the country club area potentially, depending on the CIP. It's one of the things we're going to have to work with these homeowners associations to continue to improve our ability to get them notified upfront. You know, I think we did a good job. We talked to them. I know we had a couple of meetings with them and explained everything. But unfortunately, I, I think expectations. I've said it for many years, if I could find a way to do this work at night with no noise and no interruptions, I wouldn't be here today. Unfortunately, if you want a new street or we need a new street, there's, it's not a pretty process. It, it's, it's going to be ugly for a while. It's going to be inconvenient. We'll do our best to minimize it, but we can't completely eliminate it. And so be glad to answer any questions. I know Jim's here. He worked a lot with the people out there and the engineers that were out there.
It's not added Jeff's comments that, you know, and we, we had folks reach out and I think the staff has been responsive to that. We've had some issues and tried to address them as quick as possible. I know the council received the letter earlier this week. We will be responding to that to outline what has happened and what we're trying to do there. So we're trying to be responsive back to those. I know we've had a few HOA board members reach out because you have about three different HOAs in this area that were, whether it's the townhomes or the overall Country Club Owners Association. And so definitely some, we're going to, with, as Jeff said, we're going to be doing a lot of work in these neighborhoods and these neighborhoods tend to have more irrigation in the right of way. And so whether it's putting isolation valves in for the, between the public or the private side and what's in the right of way to allow them to operate, there's just some things that, communications that go all the way back to March where, where the staff started having, making them aware of this need. And in some cases they were just okay with us, you know, tearing it out. But then after the fact, it's a different story. So, and with any of these things, you know, we're going to be doing a lot of work in these neighborhoods in the future. And we're trying, we're trying to learn as staff, as Jeff alluded to, of how we can do things more efficiently. But I think, you know, the best we can do is set those expectations up front. I know it's going to be a messy process. And in the end, it's going to result in a really nice street, a brand new street in this case. With that higher subbase grade, that's why we push hard for that subbase because that's that 50-year design life street versus the 35-year design that we had previously. But again, just wanted to make sure we touched base with you all on this because I know there's been a lot of comments and concerns about this project.
It has been a little confusing because everyone's name's Mark.
We have dealt with three, yeah, three, three or four.
I would say a big, big part of the issue with a number of the residents I spoke to out there revolve around optics, right? So you tear up the street and then they don't see anyone for two weeks. Right? And they don't understand that we may have very legitimate reasons, but all they see is every day they're driving by and nobody's working. And that's from a resident standpoint, because you don't have the insight. It's incredibly frustrating. So with the text messaging that we're going to be looking at, is that something where we would have that capability to hit those neighborhoods and say, here's what's going on, here's why you're not seeing work, that kind of thing? Because I think that would really mitigate and preempt some of those frustrations.
When we meet with them, we set up an email and say, you can contact us anytime. And we do send out updates and things like that.
Not everyone's at those meetings and not everyone's hearing that message. And, and so.
Follow that. But I mean, it's just more we can do, I think, you know, to be cognizant of, you know, something we don't think about is when no one's there. They may be wondering why. Maybe it's something we need to say, hey, we ran into some snags. There's going to be some delays. You know, we are working on it. We're not ignoring it. We're just not.
Education would go a long way just to kind of help alleviate those concerns, but I don't.
The texting tool can be used to draw a unique geographic area for people who have opted in to receive those texts.
You still have the same problem as the email. But I like the idea, but you'd have to have them opt in.
Right.
To do it.
Sure.
And then you could geofence the area of those that opted in. Again, you got to get them to come in right to the program.
You're never going to get a hundred percent.
That's right.
You know.
But, but to your point, it's a pretty common thing for folks to opt in to receive text updates now. And I'm optimistic we can give people a good platform. And I was actually speaking with one of our potential vendors about that earlier this afternoon.
Is that project on a website?
Yes. The, yes, all of the major streets projects are under major projects that have their own streets tab.
And, and every update by date is on that page.
Jeff, could we look at, you know, for the next bidlet of a, of a project like this in anywhere in the city? One, they probably have penalties, right? Of, of how long, you know, they don't get rain dates. This year you didn't get a rain date. You have some dates built in perhaps, but this long for a mistake like they made, I can't believe you have that many days built.
There's not necessarily days built in. It, it's something we use, I guess, to say, for lack of a better word, a little bit of leverage as they get down. You know, we, we can say, okay, you're done. You're, it's a, it's a hundred dollars a day or $500 a day, whatever that is. You know, they balance that with, well, I've got another project that's got a thousand dollars a day on it. Or if I get, I got a project over here that's got an incentive on it and things like that. We use those liquidated damages. We use those liquidated damages. We don't necessarily charge it. We may say, you know, hey, if you can get this done by, you know, then hurry up rather than saying it's going to be November. If you can get it done by the first of October, maybe we can, you know, give you a little bit of incentive. And we try to use those to help incentivize those completions.
We have liquidated damages on this one?
I believe we do.
And then why we get that second, they have to do dust control crack. I mean, that's got to be a mandatory inside a contract like this of dust control.
Our standard language for liquidated damage is this five hundred dollars a calendar day. I mean, that's pretty much been a line item on every project we've we've let in the time I've been here. Again, it becomes a balance, you know, it's not when you miss that date, then automatically the contractor is getting his checkbook out and. Figuring out what that bottom dollar is. I mean, it's a negotiation at that point if you elect to proceed.
But you have retainage fee that you hold until you get your liquidated damages figured out.
But when you also get into negotiation, I mean, we added some concrete work out in university. In other words, we had some patching work. We said, hey, we got to close down. We got the opportunity to get this whole stretch at this time and not come back later and close the intersection down. So then they can also say, okay, that work was an extra two days, three days. And so you get negotiating those days on where it comes to if you get into that side of it. But yes, you know, there are some in there.
My main concern is the dust complaints, right? And that just shouldn't happen. I mean, they should all have water trucks. We shouldn't be getting dusk. Complaints on jobs like this.
I don't know that we can make it a hundred percent dustless. Don't get me wrong, we can do some things, but we'll be, I mean, I wish I could say we could do it.
I get that, but the amount that I've heard of is, I guess I wasn't there, but anyway.
Yeah, and I didn't see it either. So I guess I, to that point, yes, I, you know, we can put that in there and do our best, but I, you know. To say would completely eliminate it, I don't know that we can get there.
The thing that really concerned me is this was basically one block. And it did have two intersections with university on one hundred and thirty eighth street. But it wasn't a very long stretch at all. And but a very inconvenient one that we really needed to be on top of getting open, given the number of people who use it. So I'm just concerned to think it takes that long for that little bit.
I was surprised by that.
Of a project and you're right about the not having been much rain at all. We've been in a drought. So, you know, it doesn't. I'm really worried about when we get started doing Country Club Boulevard, which is much longer stretch than this. What are we going to do? I mean, we've just got to have a firm that can get in there and work faster than this was able to.
Well, that's, that's the question. I know we all agree on this. It's the problem is we have no control over the contractor and staff really. It's not staff, but the perception is it's Clive, right? And so people get mad at Clive, but it's the contractor and the staff is busting their chops, getting the message out and doing their thing. And we're at the mercy of a contractor that can make us look good or bad.
We try to be realistic when we set those timeframes up. One of the things is, you know, contractors have a lot of options too right now. And if it's too tight in there and fitting in their schedule. They may not bid or I can't quantify what the price difference might be, but it's not going to be less.
Can we bake in incentives for them to finish earlier? Are we doing that?
We've talked about that on ninety ninth court. I mean, again, we realize that we maybe need to be doing something different. We did that. If I'm not sure how many of you folks were around in twenty fourteen on Lincoln. We did something there and we're looking at something similar there, but.
I recall on that one too, Jim, that they hit every incentive except for one phase, but they hit the overall incentive.
Yeah, we had that set up per phase, working days, incentive, disincentive, and then an overall project completion.
They missed on one phase of the four. So I mean, that's, that's the alternative, right? Is when we're working in these neighborhoods, there is the ability to do incentive contract work. We've done that before and that's something I know that the team is thinking about. And something we can continue to look at for those ones where you have a lot of driveways. Yeah, doing the neighborhoods and it just comes with a cost.
Do we do that on one hundred third street?
Yeah, down to Lincoln.
Yeah.
That's what we did. Yeah, it was the Lincoln, yeah, Lincoln, and then it curved up, up one hundred and third. It went up about, I don't know, five, six hundred feet up one hundred third.
I don't know how many neighborhoods we have where it's that big of a detour as this one took for people. This is a huge detour. In a lot of places, you know, you have to go around an extra block or something, but this was.
You're right.
Man, we just cannot be, and that's what I'm worried about with some of that Country Club Boulevard stretch. That is just, it's got to be thought through on how we handle that.
Like I mentioned, I mean, the completion date for the project itself was Labor Day, basically. By September first, we had one hundred and thirty eighth open, so the detour was back down to just going over to university, which is about a block or so extra. I mean, we didn't hit it. I'm not trying to say that, but we minimized the overall length of that impact or the extra length to basically what was expected.
But I think that's where the optics come in, Jeff.
Yeah.
Where, where, where they at? We've had to go around this for two weeks and not a single person's been out there working, right?
Definitely, oh, definitely.
True, right? But one other thing that Matt and I have talked about is a part of this message is that this is a brand new street that you didn't get assessed for. Because the council has made the policy decision that that's the way that this is going to be done because there's a benefit that everybody wins with. Though in this situation, it's your street right in front of your house, there is a unique benefit as well. And I think that's a part of the messaging that we should consider moving forward to, to help build up a little bit of sense that. It's not just the city here delivering a service just for you. It's all of us together as people who are in this endeavor, building infrastructure that we're all going to benefit from as well. And I understand that that's a little bit of a, sounds defensive, and that's not the posture I want to take with these neighborhoods, but it's the truth. It's an important truth that everybody understands when we get into these projects.
Well, what would the option have been to, you know, look at it and not think that that whole thing had to be closed until Labor Day? But to have had getting one hundred thirty eighth street open. By August first.
Little bit of cost, I mean.
Cost on how you run that program and how much footage you're going to get done and.
You know, it comes into mobilizing how many times to bring in the subgrade contractor that's going to actually, you know, put the cement stabilization in there. You know, we tear it all out once, he comes in once and we get it all ready and then we go forward. If I break it into smaller parts, I've got to pay for him to come in three different times and really small chunks. If we wanted to use a paving machine and get, you know, that that kind of thing. It becomes very cost prohibitive to get real short stretches for a paving machine, but you know.
Think about the situation, given that long detour, it might have been worth it.
No, I just wanted to where it was.
Being sure when Country Club gets started that we are absolutely. On top of figuring out how that that one's going to work.
You're just worried about all the phone calls you're going to get.
Well, and I think with Country Club too, there is going to be, and we talked about this tragic planning of, you know, that is a case of a street. That is a longer stretch. There's a choice to be had there of full reconstruction or overlay.
Overlay.
That could be done faster. I mean, we, we would trim the time significantly on an overlay versus a full reconstruction where you're having to redo the subbase. And you're redoing the curbs and everything like that, but. You're going to be coming back at some point, right? We don't have a sanitary sewer to replace under that street at this time and age isn't there on that. Water main, yes, is a potential, but you can do water main off to the side too. So there is, there's a choice to be made there because with a reconstruction of that particular stretch of roadway all the way to the dam, it's going to be done in multiple years. That's a long stretch and each stretch is going to have to be, that's actually, I would argue, a harder portion than this one. You didn't have that, you're going to have a lot more driveways to contend with where we didn't have any driveways other than street connections. And the, and the, and the business driveways with this one. So that is, that's why ninety ninth court and all these ones in the, in the neighborhood where you have multiple driveways become even more challenging. Because you got to pick a break point and how far do you want people walk into their houses where they don't have access to their homes or they got to park and walk? So those, the driveway ones become even more difficult. And with Country Club, you have three cul-de-sacs on the east side that have no other access, period. So it is going to have to be chopped. If it's a full reconstruction, it's going to have to be chopped up, even if it's an overlay, it's going to have to be staged. But I mean, we have choices and that's something also we can engage the neighborhood on of. You know, full reconstruction may take us longer to do and the funding to get there may take two, three years. You do an overlay in one year.
But I thought we already made a decision on that and I think it comes down to what you just did, your project. And the water and the, and the sprinklers even, right? You tell them that they're in the way, they're in the way, they're in the way, you tear them out and all hell breaks loose because you tore, you tore them out because they were in the way. Here you give them a choice and they said, I want a brand new street. And you put a brand new street in and they're closed off for three years in phases. And now oil breaks loose because you're, they're getting a brand new street and they're closed up, right? Until it affects them, they don't, they want the best of it and we all do, that's human nature, right? I, I thought it's strategic plan. We already said it's an over.
No, and that's, that's what we're looking at for the Country Club streets. There, there will be, there will be.
I think what we're talking about.
Make an executive decision and say, this is what we're going to do on something like that.
As we're looking at CIP, yes, so asphalt overlays are one of the things we're going to have to do out there in the country club area. But specifically, there's a bad section of Country Club south of the dam. That was the one area that, yes, it needs reconstructed. We might be able to overlay it and buy a few more years, but we're still going to have to reconstruct that. The other areas is, you know, the same way buying time. I think that was a foregone conclusion. We're going to have to start doing that in the other areas. That one section of Country Club, we're still trying to figure out what method to do for that. And then the other thing, I wish this was unique to Clive, so I knew where to go and talk to people and get help with how to get contractors moving. But the last few years, I think every city, every contractor is, you know, struggling with workforce. And, and it's showing up with, you know, maybe they get the people, but they don't have the experience. They don't have the, you know, they're, they're struggling to get these projects done. It's not that they don't want to, it's just there's challenges out there that we haven't had in the years prior to twenty.
I think one other area where we have some done some good learning over the last two or three years, Harbaugh, Clark, Lake Point, as well as on how we communicate about restoration. First part of that is because we go through a hard construction season, we don't leave ourselves with a ton of room on the growing season at the backend. To guarantee if the weather doesn't perfectly cooperate that we can get all the restoration work done. I think we can represent and do a better job sort of thinking with neighborhoods. So they are less surprised that Tate, this is going to carry over potentially into the spring. They won't like it, but it's going to be forthright. I would rather err and create a sense of putting more time on the clock than feeling like we came up short because we ran out of. Got early frost in October, for example. The other part of that is by nature of just going through a winter cycle, after you've reconstructed a street and done all that work in the right of way, you're going to have some settling. Your yard is maybe not going to look as the way it perfectly did the last time you looked at it before we did this reconstruction. It's a certain amount of just coming to understand that, that property owners need to accept that we will do our best to get back to restoration. But that doesn't mean golf course. For every person who's out there on those, in those, in those areas as well. Again, I don't want to come, have the city to come across as being defensive here, but we're talking about what is in the range of reasonable here that we need to share with these residents. And also ask them to come alongside us to and recognize that they've got a part to play here too, and getting it back to the condition that they would like to have it.
I don't know what the. How did it happen that Metronet wasn't in the right place and ended up being cut through when that's so new?
It wasn't that they weren't in the right place. It's that it was new enough that it wasn't in their system and it didn't get located through one call. So when they called one call, everyone else came out and located, but whoever Metronet has hired to do their locates didn't have it in their books yet, so they didn't market.
That was a service line also. That was a service to private residents. Those are now located.
We try and record those as drops in our own records. We have to rely on that quite a bit when we do the SQR project, but again, timing here was very tight.
I don't know what the difference is on a service line, but I wouldn't have been very happy if I had Metronet.
The drop, the drop from the street to the house.
Yeah, so from the, from the pot or from the pillar to the house, that's the drop. And that's, that's responsibility.
And they're not marked. Yeah, they're not marked and like the one in my yard, they wouldn't know where to market. Those aren't logged typically in their system. It's only the ones that are in the right.
Supposed to do. I mean, I know Mark Tross went out and showed them where it was and had it all marked. And he did that himself and they still cut it, which I wouldn't be happy about either. But what is a person supposed to do beyond that?
Only speaking for how we handle it with the SQR program because we don't want to do a deep tie narration and catch one of these that hasn't been buried deep enough. Okay.
And that also happened with marks in particular.
Right.
Barely had it under the sod.
Right, so this is even with it being marked, it was poorly, it was not installed according to this, what the city expects, needs to be at least a foot. But very rarely do those contractors actually get it that deep. What we kind of keep track of is when we talk to our residents participating in the SQR is tell us where it is so that then we can put that on our data for our contractor. So that they can then know it's in this general area and see if it's a way for them to eyeball sort of where it's going into the house. But beyond that, it's not something we have as like an ASBilt that we can rely on and I.
All right, so we'll continue to work. Just wanted to have this discussion and provide an update. Thanks, guys. The other items I wanted to mention too is I'll share some information. As you saw earlier, it was last week, Pope County has set a bond referendum for this fall for the airport. They're doing conduit bonding for the airport. The airport authority would be paying for those bonds. But the Pope County, they're using Pope County's bonding authority to do so. Have some information to share. Of course, there is campaign efforts going on. Of course, this city and many others supported that airport terminal contribution of over half a million dollars. I think that's something the city should be proud of and share. Of course, with bond referendums, you have, you know, certain requirements in terms of government folks in terms of yes campaigns. But just wanted to make you aware that that is out there and there's an active campaign going for that bond referendum. I know the partnerships involved and some other entities as well. Dart, coming back to Dart, so that budget workshop on Tuesday, I know I. Probably haven't had a whole lot of time to look at. I know if you've looked at the presentation that was shared on Tuesday related to the budget situation with Dart. It comes down to a couple of different pieces. For a few years here, about three years, the city of Des Moines has been funding Dart. So there's the ninety five cent levy cap. We've talked about that quite a bit. That's a legislative cap that's there for property tax levy for public transit. Des Moines has been at that cap for three years. When they hit that cap under the new funding formula that was approved a number of years ago, I believe Commissioner or Councilmember McCoy was the commissioner then. That funding formula allocated a certain amount of responsibilities to the city of Des Moines for where those core routes were. And then to the other communities, I think, that had regular service and then it tiered down. If you had express route service and, and weekend service, it gave you different tiers. Clive, I believe, is in tier three, Des Moines in tier one, and then West Des Moines, Wakieltuna, a couple of others in tier two. And then your tax rate was kind of based off of that, those different tiers. What that resulted in is the city of Des Moines had to would go up to the ninety five cent levy and they committed to funding. Their allocation even above that ninety five cents, what they would normally be paying if there wasn't the cap. They were funding that out of their park and ride revenues from their park and ride downtown. But they said that wasn't forever. And so that was the big push on the legislative strategy to try to find alternative revenue sources for Dart. Whether it was eliminating the cap or other sources. This last legislative session, part of the property tax or tax legislation that was passed. There was a clause or a section in one of the bills to allow the city of Des Moines only, and I know we've talked about this in this chambers before. To increase their franchise fee, their utility, energy or electric and gas franchise fee from five percent to seven and a half percent. That two and a half percent difference could only go towards public transit. So where we're at today is the city of Des Moines has not made a decision yet on whether or not they are going to utilize this option that has now been passed by legislation. And so in this budget workshop, Dart was staff was estimating. If that funding allocation, that additional funding isn't provided and the city of Des Moines decides that, that their park and ride revenue is gone. And they're going to go down to the ninety five cent cap. There's a substantial amount of service reductions that need to happen, particularly in the core of the city of Des Moines, to the tune of almost seven, a little over seven million dollars in service cuts. So those were presented during that workshop. Separately from that is the outside of Des Moines. Separately from that is the outside of Des Moines funding model where the, the way the new formula was set up, there's a number of cities where tax rates were going in the other direction down to compensate for these different tiers. Clive included, our rate has been going down over a series of years. It's anticipated to be fully implemented by fiscal twenty twenty nine, I believe. Where our rate would continue to go down, recognizing that we're at a different service tier than a West Des Moines or an Altoona, for example. What they're looking at there is if that is allowed to continue with the ninety five cent cap and other reductions, that there would be about approximate three million dollar service cut need in the suburban communities, for lack of a better phrase. And those were also identified in that presentation. The main discussion during the budget workshop is with any service cuts potential, there is a pretty lengthy public engagement input process that is required as a part of their federal funding. I think it's, I think it's Title VII, if I recall, I can't remember what title it is, but they have to start doing some public engagement here pretty soon to at least put information out there and it kind of starts that public information clock. So one of the big questions was, was is what do we start with? And I think the, the board, the consensus of the board, so to make up for the suburban gap, we'll call it, would require some of those property tax rates not to maybe decrease as fast that they would hold for a few years before they would decrease. The conversation around the commission was, particularly with the suburban communities is there wasn't a desire to see those service cuts at this time. But we recognize that the city of Des Moines has a big question to answer. And some of those impacts in the core of Des Moines do impact the suburban routes because a lot of those routes eventually come out. So it does change some of the service frequency in the suburban communities. So there was a comfort with not showing the cuts on that end, but showing the, the worst case scenario on the Des Moines end since they have a decision to make. And getting public input on that. They weren't, the commission by no means was making a final decision on anything. They were making a choice of what do we want the public to react to? And that is what was the direction that was given, that was shared in that email that I forwarded from the CEO of Dart. So that was a kind of a short version of that fifty, sixty slide presentation, but there's a lot of factors that are going into, you know, Dart's levy, what cities individually capture as a part of our tax increment, financing districts, impacts the Dart levy directly, just like our general fund levy is impacted by our T valuation capture. So there was some financial modeling shown there. So the idea is, is if, we'll call it the best case scenario is if the suburban funding is there to continue those routes and this is just continuing existing service where it is at today. And then if the city of Des Moines makes the choice to increase their franchise fee and the, the Des Moines Commissioner, who was there, indicated support for that and that he was pushing his council to do that. Again, that will, we'll see where that, how that plays out. That would provide a little over six million dollars and there would be ability to not have the service reductions that were outlined. And so that is where Dart is at today with those conversations. I know Councilmember McElhaney was not gonna be able to be here tonight. So I told him I would kind of share the summary of what was discussed from that meeting. That was a lot. And there's a lot of that presentation. It's a good one to flip through though, because they, they do provide a lot of good stats and information in terms of how Dart compares to other systems of like size and the funding combination of property tax or local funding versus state funding, federal funding, and then own revenue that is generated by the system itself. I think, oh, there's only one or two other systems that actually generated more revenue on their own than Dart. Dart was up there pretty high based on the numbers that were shown in that presentation. So again, I think it's, it's good information to have, but so there is gonna be some public input happening and it will be showing service reductions to get appropriate public input back on that. And so there'll be more discussions. They have a, a commission meeting next Tuesday, regular commission meeting next Tuesday that I know Councilmember McElhaney will, actually, I think he's asking you to be there for him because he's not back from his trip yet. But that there'll be more discussions on this, but that was the direction that was provided at the workshop.
I just want to remind though that this has been being discussed for three years. I've brought it to you, that this is about to happen. And yet nothing is presented till this week that it's happening, right? This is your first time you hear service cuts and we're gonna have to slash and Des Moines is not gonna put the money up and we're gonna, there are several cities that are going to say, or today are posturing, they're just out. They'll leave and there's significant cities that are going to leave. So, you know, I, I think, you know, personally, you leave it to Des Moines to figure out, to make it whole first before the suburbs react. To say, yes, we continue to fund the three million. This was agreed on. When the governance happened and when the new financial model happened, everybody agreed. Everybody knew city of Clive's fees were gonna go down and the other cities were going down. I was in a chart. It was very aware to everybody. Nobody was worried. Right? Staff didn't show the modeling of the disaster coming until this year. But yet we've been talking about it for at least three years, this council. So it's a tough one for me to just say, eh, now let's just pay our fair share, cause right, when we knew that this was headed this way and the blinders were on for this long.
Any other questions or comments on that?
What else have you got?
Last thing for me is I will be headed out of town starting tomorrow and next week. Part of that's the, my professional conference in Austin, Texas, but I'll be available by phone, but Pete will be acting city manager in my stead, so. That's all I have, Your Honor, unless there's any questions.
Is anybody else planning on going to the groundbreaking for the airport terminal? Okay, good. And I would just add one thing to what you said, that the savings that happens for the terminal by being able to use the county's bonding authority instead of going straight to the bank results in about a seventy million dollar impact, which means it can get to finishing it sooner because this is having to be done in a phased approach where we have this skywalk thing going over to old gates to have enough gates to serve our needs. And personally, I'd really like to see that not have to last forever. I would encourage you to, you know, help people know it isn't going to affect your property tax. The only thing it affects is how much the county can borrow down the road because it's taking away some of their authority for use for this purpose for a while. So they had to realize, okay, we've done the jail, we've done the courthouse. We don't see a significant need for that piece. That's how that's gonna work. And I got to see that work really effectively on some of the Vision Iowa projects that happened about twenty years ago around the state. That it helped get some big projects done when entities would borrow from their local authority. Thanks, let me jump in.
I think all of you got an invitation to a D mark event. I'm guessing not everyone's gonna be able to get down to it, so we're working to get D mark and Cloud Community Services here to make a presentation. Hopefully in the next thirty to sixty days. And I think I sent a note to you about being invited to participate in Trees Forever and so Susan, I know you're familiar with the million trees and I don't know if Richard, but I don't know if you wanna comment on that or if anyone had any thoughts. It seemed like a positive thing to be involved with. Anyone here not a tree hugger or anti-tree?
To me, it seemed like something we were doing. All right, so.
Okay.
You might as well get credit for it.
All right, just wanted to get confirmation on that. And then I think we had a very successful session on elevating civility and local campaigns. And Susan, I appreciate that you were able to be there and we had a lot of positive feedback, so. Anyway, that's all I've got. Do we have any correspondence? Anything else for the good of the order? Otherwise, we'll adjourn at seven fifty-nine.